It's here and now. President Trump has imposed high tariffs on goods from certain countries. He has also paused some tariffs and threatened new ones. It's head spinning. Take the country of Lesotho, it's one of the poorest in Africa. Once Lesotho was the denim capital of the continent, making garments for big American brands. But after Trump slapped 50% tariffs on the countries earlier this year, some of the highest in the world, orders dried up. And now Lesotho's government has declared a two-year national state of disaster. Kate Bartlett reports from the capital, Maseru.
It's a chilly winter's evening, and workers who've just finished their shifts are streaming out of precious garments factory as many bus taxi touts just offer passengers heading home. I asked one worker, 48-year-old Mavi Tumela Ramakatani, who's wrapped in a blanket against the cold, what she spent the day sewing.
In our factory, we are doing the quality tissues that even President Trump swears.
But she's worried she might not be making them much longer. In the wake of President Trump's tariff announcement in April, many factories here have already closed entirely. And while Ramakatani still has some orders, she's been put on what people here call short time, working half the month for half the money, about $80 US dollars.
There are those who went for short time because there is no work. And then we have told that on September, there will be no work totally at the factory.
Trump announced 50% tariffs on Lesotho in April, pointing to a trade deficit with the US. Since then, everyone here has been holding their breath as the Lesotho government desperately tries to negotiate.
The globe has been shaken. As we speak, multilateralism seems to be something that we are walking away from.
Trade Minister Moketi Shilele says yes, there is a trade deficit because Lesotho can't afford much of what the US produces. But he argues the relationship still benefits both countries. For example, he notes, Lesotho has just given Elon Musk's Starlink satellite service a license to operate here.
We are a very small nation that has had a longstanding relation with the United States of America. And hopefully, this relationship will continue to get stronger, even under these trying times.
However, he says, even if Trump changes his mind, it might be too late for the jobs already lost. Ressalit Seeshweh Mosheeshweh manages a Maseru factory that exports to Walmart. He said even though they were paused, the effect of Trump's tariff announcement was immediate. His factory has been closed for a few weeks now, and all the workers have been sent home.
We cannot get raw material, we cannot export. Orders have been stopped because everybody doesn't know what's going to happen. People who are supplying us with orders were escaped.
The Trade Minister says, well, 12,000 direct factory jobs are going to be lost. The knock-on effects on other industries that support the garment workers means 40,000 people will be out of work. All this in a country where youth unemployment was already close to 50%. Outside the Levi's factory in Maseru, a small market survives off garment worker wages, barely. This cobler, Tumela Rakoti, says he was already suffering because factory workers can't afford to bring their shoes for a pair. 19-year-old Insati Hekwa, who sells a deep-fried bread called Fat Cook, says her tuck shop business was also affected by the garment workers' purse tightening. So if you could give a message to President Trump, what would you say?
I would say, President Donald Trump, if only you knew how many offers depend on Americans, can we offer him something so that he can stop whatever he's doing?
Most garment workers here are women, many single mothers, living with HIV in a country with some of the highest infection rates in the world. These jobs gave them independence and dignity. Now with factories closing, that hard-won progress is slipping away, and their futures hang in the balance. Ramakatani, who makes Trump-branded golf shirts, says the work was hard at first.
When I started, it was hard work, but now it's my work. I do it perfectly. I'm proud of my work. It supported my family, so...
Now, facing the loss of that job, she says there's only one thing left to do: pray.
We are on our knees. We are on our knees. Now, our hope is only to God, to change Donald Trump's mind.
For NPR News, I'm Kate Bartlett in Maseru.
While we have a moment, we'd like to get your input for a story we're working on. It's about getting a license to drive.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our 2:00 PM session of our July 21, 2025 City Council meeting. It is great to have you all here today and those who are tuning in today as well. City Council meetings are televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronookva. City Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And a note that Roanoke City Council meeting livestreams will be moving to the city's YouTube channel beginning in August of 2025. Today will be the final meetings that will be streamed to Facebook. Beginning August 4, YouTube will serve as the new home for livestreaming, ensuring continued accessibility and transparency for the public. City Council meetings will continue to air live on RV TV Channel 3, and recordings will re-air on public access channels on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and will be available for replay on RV TV's YouTube channel. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mr. Volison.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mayor Cobb.
Here. And a quorum is present. It's my honor to introduce Reverend Joseph Butler, priest-in-charge at St. James Episcopal Church, who will lead us in our invocation, and then I will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
Thank you all for inviting me back. And if I can do a shameless plug, this is a very special week for St. James, is the feast of our patron, St. James the Apostle, and it is also the 75th year of St. James' founding back in 1950. So we're having quite a big Sunday service. Services are at 8:00 and 10:00. Everyone's invited, and the eating starts at about 11:15. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly ask that you may always prove ourselves to be a people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Indue with the spirit of wisdom those who, in your name, we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to your law, we may show forth your praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, let us not our trust in you fail, all which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon all who hold office, and especially this Roanoke City Council, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve you in the offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Butler, and please extend our congratulations to the parish at St. James on 75 years. It's fantastic. Well, it's great to welcome you all today. We have a couple of announcements to share. First of all, the Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. We encourage any citizen that is interested in applying to do so. You can visit the city's website at roanookva.gov to look at the different boards and commissions and vacancies that are currently open, as well as fill out an online application. In addition to that, I want to share that earlier this morning at 11:00, we had the honor in partnership with Blue Ridge Independent Living Center to celebrate the 35th ADA American with Disabilities Act anniversary at the Henrietta Lacks Plaza. We had an opportunity to issue a proclamation commemorating this landmark civil rights legislation that prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities in all areas of public life, including employment, education, transportation, and public accommodations. This law was signed by President George H.W. Bush on July 26, 1990. It was fitting for us today to have this event at the Henrietta Lacks Plaza. Research using Lacks immortal cells, known as HeLa cells, led to tremendous advances in treating conditions protected under the ADA, like sickle cell anemia, cancer, and HIV. Having this celebration in the shadow of her statue honors her legacy. We are also grateful for the advocacy work performed by Blue Ridge Independent Living Center under the leadership of Karen Mikolsky Carney, who is the executive director for the center. Karen was actually present at the signing of the law 35 years ago in Washington, DC. We thank Board of Directors member Jessica Swanson for a very moving speech that was shared by Karen on her behalf today. And we thank all of our city staff who helped make this possible. And of course, one of the hallmarks of our gathering today, not only to celebrate 35th anniversary, but was to unveil the handicap accessible ramp that is nearly complete in front of the municipal building, and we're excited for that to be finished and for there to be increased access to our building. All right, we're going to carry on with our council shout-outs, which we do at our 2:00 meetings to highlight things that we've been a part of as council members throughout the city that we feel it's important to acknowledge. So I'm going to start with Ms. Powers this time.
Yes, I like to do a shout-out to the Roanoke City Public Libraries. They've been hosting every week a Cupcakes with Council Members, and we've been there to meet people, to come. It's been very informative for them to meet us and to have discussions with us about things that are important to them. And it's been important to me because I've got to meet a lot of important people that have ideas and things that are near and dear to their heart that they hope that we will look into. So I appreciate what Roanoke City Public Libraries are doing.
My shout-out goes to Virginia's Blue Ridge, Roanoke outside, USA Cycling, and all those that helped out with the national championships that were here in Roanoke this past week. It was really amazing to see the short track at Elmwood. And my understanding is that there was a lot of great feedback about the event and look forward to hopefully hosting them again next year.
I would did what you just said and give thanks to all those folks you just mentioned. You know, I was able to speak to some cyclists from Washington State, Idaho, Boise, Idaho. I'm like, Boise, Idaho, like, you came already here to ride a bike. But they came here to ride a bike, and they all loved Roanoke. They loved our downtown, they loved our city, and, you know, as well as the surrounding localities and our connection to nature. So it was really cool to meet so many amazing, extraordinary people.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely echo everything my colleagues shared. Love the Cupcakes with Council. I can't make mine on the 28th, so I think you're going to be hearing from someone to schedule in for me. So sorry to miss that, but I think that's a wonderful program. And I also was really pleased to meet so many people in town for the cycling competition and was really proud of all of the positive feedback that I heard from people who were out cycling around the city, on the greenway, taking time to hike. So that was really good to hear. Was pleased with that. And then for my shout-out, I want to thank all of the folks with solid waste management. Trash is stinky, and it is really stinky when it gets hot and humid. And so I know that we have a lot of people working really hard to make sure that our streets stay clean. And I just want to remind our residents, I was talking about this with my neighbors the other day, about properly disposing your garbage so that it is picked up in a timely way, bagged accordingly. And I just really appreciate all of our staff that pick up our trash, our solid waste management staff. Mr. Haynesworth and his team do a really great job, and I just appreciate them very much. So thank you.
My shout-out goes to the permit department. They have done an outstanding job, and I know that they're short-staffed, and they have plenty of events that they have to do permitting for every week. So thank you for what you guys do.
Yeah, just echo everything that's already been said. Shout out to solid waste. So thank y'all.
Thank you all. And just to elaborate a little more, it is remarkable to see the agility, flexibility of Elmwood Park. I would have never imagined that it would be a short-track course for USA Cycling, mountain biking, but it was phenomenal to see that. And kudos to everyone who was a creative part of that. And kudos to USA Cycling. I was talking with one of our landscape staff, and she said, you know, whenever you have races going through the park, you have some recovery that needs to be done in terms of grass and that sort of thing. And USA Cycling, from the beginning, said, anything that we need to do to work with you, whether it's cost-related, we want to make sure that the integrity of the property is maintained. And that's a really great hallmark of a partnership. And they will be back next year. It's a two-year partnership, so we're excited about that. The other thing I'd like to point out is that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission has been working on a really extraordinary project that incorporates planting trees in memory of those who've died by gun violence and whose cases are still cold. And that means there hasn't been an arrest or the possibility of justice being served. And a number of these trees have been planted, both in Perry Park and Horton Park. And this last Saturday, a lot of people gathered to remember the life of Jacoby Taylor as a tree was planted in his memory. So I want to commend the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, as well as the families. It's important to have these kinds of moments because it helps in the healing process and the grieving process, but it also celebrates a life that was taken from us too soon. So my thoughts to the Taylor family and my gratitude to everyone who's helping to make that possible. All right, we have another special recognition, so I'm going to head down to the podium, and I'm going to ask Wayne Farley if he'll join me as well. So this is an exciting day for a lot of reasons. It's always great when we can recognize our departments, as well as our employees, for extraordinary work. Wayne's going to say more about this gentleman in a minute, but we want to today congratulate Roger Davis for being named NAFA Technician of the Year. That's pretty extraordinary. Standing out among more than 100 applicants across the country, Roger's dedication, expertise, and commitment to learning have earned him this prestigious honor, and we are proud to have him representing the City of Roanoke. We also want to extend our congratulations to Stephen Brockman, who received an honorable mention for the Fleet Professional of the Year Award, a testament to his hard work and leadership in fleet management. Additionally, the City of Roanoke Fleet Services was ranked 76th out of 246 entries in the 2025 NAFSA 100 Best Fleets in the Americas, showcasing our team's ongoing efforts to operate a professional, efficient, and forward-thinking fleet operation. So Wayne, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
So the NAFSA program has been ongoing for several decades, but the City of Roanoke has been in and out of the program, applying, you know, when we had things to showcase and things of that sort. Last year, we qualified eighth in the Green Garage Award. So out of all the participants that, you know, participated in that, and so this is a very prestigious honor to have the top technician in the United States. So not only the All-American City, we now have the All-American Technician of the area. And so the scoring, we just went to a meeting the other day to find out a little bit more about the scoring, to understand, you know, how it all works. And from first to 59th, there was 1.15 percentage difference between 1 through 59. And in the people that scored from 1 to 10, there was a hundredth of a point. So there's just a lot of, a lot of good things going on in fleet and a lot of things that happen. And we have Roger Davis with us. He's been with the city about nine years, working on his 10th year. And he's one of those once-in-a-lifetime professionals. He's tenacious when it comes to learning. We have an online app that we use in the garage to help train our folks up to get them ready to take ASC testing. And so Roger has taken over 4,000 courses on his own, above and beyond what we do, and he's scored around a 97 percentile for the accuracy of his answers. So he'll tell you he's not the top technician of the US, but he really is. He really is tenacious in his learning. So at this point, I'd like to invite him up to the podium. I don't really have much to say, other than thank you, boss, for entering me. Again, I don't say that I'm humble, but guys and people that work in the shop, there's tons of things they know that I don't know, certain things they're better at than I am. I just keep trying to move forward and learn as much as I can, but thank you, guys. We taking pictures?
Yeah. I just want to say it was an honor just to be mentioned and with this program, just being with the city for two years. It's been a fun and exciting challenge, and it's just great to be recognized for some of the work that we do as a team every day and bringing acknowledgement for the city. It's definitely an honor. So thank you.
I'm going to ask the team to come forward, as well as Sam, our DCM, as well as the Madam Manager, because this is a once-in-a-career opportunity today. Thank you.
We are going to have to come in just a little bit. Vice Mayor McGuire, there you go. That's good. Everybody, we're going to go one, two, three.
Now, I heard earlier that there is a fantastic video interview with Roger on RV TV. Not today, but when you go to RV TV, you can find it.
It'll be tomorrow.
Oh, it'll be tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Something to look forward to?
Yep.
All right. Congratulations, Roger and Stephen. And again, I want to commend Vice Mayor for giving a shout-out to solid waste. We're in really challenging times, and Public Works does so much in our city to make sure that we're humming along, and solid waste is such an integral part of that. And as much as they work so hard for us, we need to work hard for them and with them as citizens to make sure we're doing what we can to not only appropriately bag and throw away our trash and our recycling, which, by the way, we are still very much doing. But also, I appreciate everyone in the community that takes the time, whether in the different ploking groups, or I'm seeing more people just in my neighborhood walking around with a trash bag, picking up trash. And I appreciate that, but my call-out really is to citizens, there's no reason to throw trash on the ground, period. None. We got to do a better job about that, and I know we can do it. So let's continue to work as hard as we can to keep our city clean. All right, next up is our Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters, and this is a time that council sets as a priority because we want to hear from our citizens. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, recommendation, or report to council, as she may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens signed up to speak today?
We do. We have approximately six, five to six speakers.
Fantastic.
I will call them two by two.
That'd be great.
The first would be Jeanette Morris. And we have a sign on, it doesn't say first name, last name, but Buckner, Mr. or Ms. Buckner.
Is Jeanette here?
Jeanette.
Oh, come on up. Yeah, come on up, please. Welcome. Everyone will have three minutes today. We appreciate you being here.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb and council members. Thank you for letting me speak today. My issue that I'm bringing up is about code enforcement here in the Roanoke Valley. I've been dealing with this since 2021. I came down here before, it was in July 2021, speaking about trash on property, like property owners, like a complex, apartment complex. I'm from southwest Roanoke, and it's still continuing. I have to continuously call to get the trash cleaned up around the apartment complex. I'm also complaining about people cutting their grass in the Roanoke Valley and leaving it on the sidewalks, in the streets. That's a form of littering to me. It doesn't look good. And when I say cutting grass, I'm talking about grass that gets at least this tall. So when they cut it, it looks like a hay field. So just a couple weeks ago, I called about the trash at the complex. Two days later, it was cleaned up, but I shouldn't have to do that continuously. You should have a code enforcer that goes to these property owners and either tells them to get it up in so many days or find them. And so what I'm here to say is, I think... in so many days, or find them. And so what I'm here to say is, I think we need more code enforcers. I don't know what's going on, but for me to have to come back four years later and tell you it's still continuing, and, you know, I spoke with Mr. Sherman Lee about it. He put all the right people in place with the Water Authority, and it's still continuing, as I say. Just on Brandon Avenue, going into Towers the other day, a property owner had someone else cut the grass, and they just left it. And here come a hard rain. Where did it go? Right into the drain, where I'm saying we have a lot of that going on. And we just don't look like a good city when we let that continue. I don't know if y'all agree. Do you think, you know, people, because one time I did get an email from one of the employees here that said that they would not enforce that, you know, and that's one of my peeves, is seeing that. It doesn't look good for the city, and the more and more you let people do it, the more and more that does it. So, you know, I just feel like we need more code enforcers for Roanoke in the budget for maybe next year, and maybe let property owners know that, you know, this is their property. They have to maintain from the curb, the sidewalk, to their alleys. I know that. I'm sure a lot of people do, but there's a lot of people that just ignore it, and they've gotten away with it. And also, one more thing, we also have businesses here in Roanoke that put up cans with chains hanging on them as a fencing in the city. It doesn't look good. Part of it's on 13th Street. We have on 13th Street, if any of you want to take a look at that. We have a business owner who has yellow tires with chain link, and that's his fence. That's the front of his business, and it just, I think we have codes for that. So thank you for letting me speak and hearing what I have to say, and hopefully we can fix it.
I appreciate that, and I don't know if you have an opportunity, maybe you could, before the end of the meeting, share the address of the, the properties, if you haven't done that already.
It's all over Roanoke. You just need to take a look at all over Roanoke, on property, people that own property here in Roanoke, that they just need to know that they aren't responsible for, for not doing that, and to clean up, just like you said at the start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who was the next speaker?
Mr. or Ms. Buckner, and I don't believe they are here. I don't know if that was correct.
Let's go on to the next two.
All right, the next two would be Ken McLeod, McLeod, and Sharon Fritz.
Ken, welcome. Yeah, come on up.
So I think we have three.
Are you all together?
We are.
Okay, nice.
More or less. Yeah, so, hi, Mayor Cobb, hi, members of the city council. My name is Ken McLeod. I live in the Wasina neighborhood. I'm speaking to you today as Board Chair of Pedal Safe Roanoke, and to give you an update on some of our recent and upcoming activities. So Pedal Safe adopted our first-ever strategic plan this year. We just adopted that this month, and we decided to organize around three goals. Infrastructure advocacy, to advocate for the development of low-stress connected bicycle infrastructure that enables safe travel to everyday destinations. Outreach and engagement, to promote Roanoke's livability by engaging, educating, and mobilizing the community to support cycling as a safe and accessible transportation option for all. And internal operations, to strengthen Pedal Safe Roanoke's organizational sustainability to ensure long-term impact. I've shared that strategic plan overview with all of you over email early, early today, and I know that members of Pedal Safe would welcome the opportunity to meet with you, either individually or as a city council, to talk more about our strategic goals and collaborate with you in the future. I also want to highlight two upcoming events. So one is our next public meeting, which is on Monday, August 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Star Hill Pilot Brewery, right across from Virginia Tech Corillian on Jefferson Street. We'll be gathering downtown beforehand at 6:00 PM to ride our bikes on Jefferson Street to the Star Hill Pilot Brewery. We're really excited to talk about the demonstration project that the city did during Go Fest last year that put protected bike lanes on Jefferson Street, and talk about the future of that corridor. And then also, and this is why I'm joined by members of the Bus Riders of Roanoke Advocacy Group, we want to collaborate with them to support The Week Without Driving and invite all of you to participate. That will be September 29th, October 5th. And The Week Without Driving asks people to not drive during the week in order to gain an understanding of what it is like for the many people who cannot drive and who have to use public transportation, biking, walking, or getting rides from others to get around. So there's some flyers that they'll talk about later, but really hope that you can participate. You may get rained on, as I did before this council meeting, but it's a great opportunity to get out there and understand how to get around our streets without a car.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Fritz.
Do y'all want to restart the time?
Sure.
All right. Hi, I'm Sharon with Bus Riders of Roanoke, and we brought this book, A Week Without Driving, and we're going to give it to the mayor, and then we also have invitations to invite the city council members to that event, A Week Without Driving. And so the lady who wrote this book is blind, and, or vision impaired. And so she talks about how 30% of the people in our nation don't drive, and that can be due to their age or disability, but 11% of the households in Roanoke, 11%, don't have a car. And that's why we are always coming to talk to you about how we need to work on transit, equitable transit, and make sure it's funded for the 11% of households that don't have a car in Roanoke. And we gave this book to Molly with Neighborhood Services, and also Rob Isom, who is at Transit, and now we're giving it to the mayor. Can I, okay.
Give it to the city manager here.
All right, and, um. So, yeah, that, um, that A Week Without Driving is at the end of, is the end of September, and so we encourage everyone to attempt to take public transit and see how far you can get if you leave your car, or maybe just leave it a little bit at home, and see what life would be like if you didn't have a car in Roanoke. And we actually got some really good news today, because another place, like, we have this great ramp that we opened today outside. Love it, beautiful. Where else do we need a ramp? We need a ramp at the Walmart bus stop, and that's something that we've been talking about for 15 years. Well, I heard something good today, that Walmart, actually, after 15 years, y'all, has reached out to Mr. Price from Valley Metro, and that Walmart is ready to work with us to design a bus shelter at the Walmart, because that is, isn't that the number-one most-used stop in the city? I believe it is. It gets more bus traffic to the Walmart Valley View bus stop than anywhere in town. That's why.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but if you could face this way for the mic, so that people online can hear you better.
And that is why we need that, that better bus shelter there. And I think we, we actually have made some progress on that. They're gonna, they're going to work on that. So maybe, like, when people are buying their Christmas gifts this year, they won't be standing out there in the rain, and it'll be equitable and accessible for people that are in wheelchairs to get into, off of the bus, into Walmart, and come back to get on the bus. What do you think, Sylvia?
Well, Sharon, thanks for your comments.
Welcome, Ms. King.
Good afternoon. We want to start the time over again. Good afternoon, City Council Mayor Cobb, and Vice Mayor McGuire, and the city council members, and also the city manager and his, her team. We want to also, we emphasize about Walmart at Valley View. That's the emphasis in the location, is the one at Valley View, okay? And Sharon already addressed some of the issues and concerns as a advocate and part of the board member of BRAGS, you know. If anyone doesn't know what that means, it means BRAGS. What does it mean, Sharon?
Bus Riders of Roanoke Accessibility. That's what we're working for at Walmart, is accessibility for people who have wheelchairs to get off the bus, go into Walmart, do their shopping, get back. They can't do that now.
Okay, so if you look at Walmart accessibility, and we're so grateful for the ADA today, because it just came in line. It's like, in other words, it's a confirmation of what we're standing up here to talk about, because at the Walmart at Valley View, if you are on a wheelchair, if you're walking with a cane, or if you walk in, some passengers, they walk with a cane, and then they got the shopping cart where they try to put the groceries in to get up on the hill to get on the bus. And sometimes the bus, metro bus, have to go a little bit further down where the street is when you come into Walmart to be able to get on the bus. So those are the main issues. It's not only a shelter, but we need a ramp. And the good news is, yeah, I thought I was coming up here to be an advocate, but I got to do a shout-out. As city council, y'all get a shout-out to the community, the organizations. Also, as an organization, we want to give a shout-out to GRTC, because they're on their jobs. Why? It's because the communication with Walmart, they reached out to this organization and board and say, wait a minute, we may be able to do something, and just found out that this has been negotiated over 15 years. So therefore, it's time to make a change. And it's also great and wonderful to know that prayer can change some things, because 15 years and 2025, we're trying to be an advocate to put the shelter, and a lady was telling me that she got drenched with water, with rain coming down, and she had to go into Walmart and call Lyft in order to come and pick her up, and she was wet when she got into the car. Another thing, I got two seconds. Another thing is to the signs. Now, Mayor Cobb, he put that up in the meeting room, so I say he all up in my delivery, about signs at Washington Park Pool. There's like a half a block where there's supposed to be a bus sign, and I was getting off the bus there. And we realized, the bus driver and myself, we realized that that bus sign is so faded that you cannot able to read it. So I don't know who's in charge of that, but that particular bus sign needs to be taken down and put up another one. And I know they're anticipating to remove all the signs in the future to do something more updated. So we commend GRTC for that also. And also, this is one respectful place on Melrose, 12th Street. There's a bus sign, and we need to give respect and honor to that community, where a bus sign has a tree stub, a thin one, and then they got another tree stub. It's a fat, a larger one, a little bit, that I guess that's supposed to be the chair or the bench, or whatever, but we definitely need to look at that, because that is not acceptable.
We will take a look at that. Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your advocacy.
Our next meeting is August 7th at the Neads for Labor, and we saw the invitations for the.
Thank you very much. We look forward to that. Thank you, Mr. McLeod, too. All right, do we have other citizens this afternoon?
We have one other speaker, and that is Niran Nichols.
I don't see Niran. All right, then we will move on to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. As a note of information, there are two requests for closed meetings from the city attorney within the consent agenda. The first is to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter regarding utility services provided to city residents and any impacts caused by the location of a business or industry to the region. And the second is to consult with legal counsel regarding a certain legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by the city attorney concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the central part of the city of Roanoke. I would entertain, please, a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Volason. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the consent agenda is adopted. As we move on to our regular agenda, we have no public hearings this afternoon. We do have a couple of petitions and communications. The first is the acceptance and appropriation of the Victim Witness Program grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services. There's one measure in ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volason and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance accepting and appropriating the FY 2026 Victim Witness Program grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services and authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain such funds as detailed more fully infra, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Turner, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I'm going to stay.
Okay. Any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item two is the acceptance and appropriation of Total Action for Progress, also known as TAP, funds by the sheriff's office. We have one measure in ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volason and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funds from the FY 26 Total Action for Progress Pathway Home Program funded by the U.S. Department of Labor, and appropriating 2025 and 2026 said funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such funds, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Yeah, pleased to welcome Sheriff Hosh, if you'd like to come forward and share any additional information with us.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, to all those near proper places. Let me just say thank you all for allowing us to go forward. This partnership with TAP is a great partnership. We do this partnership as an opportunity to put people back out into society better than the way we found them. And as we have seen, people need resources. They need the help. They need the structure so that way they can stay out into society and become a better product for themselves and for their families. As you all know, the biggest impact from adults being in custody is their kids. And so we are making this a holistic approach, not just helping the residents or the inmates in our custody, but going after their kids as well, so that way we can make an impact for our community. And so I just wanted to say thank you all. You didn't have to do it. Thank you to those, the city manager's office, the attorney's office, for, again, helping me process the lease for the building as well. But all of this working together is going to allow the resource center to move forward effective next week.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions for Sheriff Hosh, or any discussion?
Just one question. When I was reading through the materials for this meeting, I saw there would be, I think it was like monthly reports, or some kind of like regular occurring report. Could you share that? Is it, would it be okay to shadow council? Because I would like to track the process and see the work you all are doing, so that if this is, you know, successful, which we hope and pray it is, we start having the conversation early potentially about how do we sustain that if it is effective? Because, you know, those type of granting things, they come and go sometimes. So if it is effective, I'd like us to start thinking ahead about how do we sustain it?
So when we meet, I saw, as the organization and the team that's put in place to support this, what we'll do is, once we meet with TAP and their leadership team, that same report that they put out will make sure that we forward it to the city of Roanoke, because the process over the next three months will determine each level, as you all read the MOU, or if you read it, that determines the levels of the funding. And so our goal is to make sure that we effective, so that way we can continue to get the money over the next three months.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Hagan, I believe you have a statement you need to read.
Yeah, so I, Nicholas Hagan, state that I have a personal interest in this item, number 62 on the June 21st, 2025, 2:00 PM agenda, regarding an appropriation of funds, because I'm part owner of the property that these funds will be used for lease, excuse me, used for, to lease and renovate, and as such, I have a personal interest in this matter. Therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code, Section 2.2-311. Therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code, section two-point-two-dash-three-one-one-two, I will refrain from participation in this matter. I ask that the clerk accept this statement and ask that be made part of the, uh, minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Any further discussion from any members of council? All right, and Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones. And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Move now to our reports of city officers and the city manager. And we have two briefings this afternoon. And I'll, uh, invite our city manager, Ms. Turner, to introduce each of those for us.
Thank you, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Please allow me to introduce to you Bradley Stevens, who will be presenting on Grant Ready Roanoke. Grant Ready Roanoke is a six-month-long capacity, nonprofit capacity building course organized by Virginia Tech's Institute for Policy and Governance. This project is part of a year-long partnership with IPG and the city of Roanoke to pro, to, I'm sorry, to improve cross-sector collaboration in Roanoke's nonprofit ecosystem. Mr. Stevens.
Welcome, Mr. Stevens. It's good to see you.
You as well. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, esteemed members of city council, Ms. Turner. Thank you so much for having us this afternoon. Uh, um, for those that don't know me, my name is Brad Stevens. I'm a Ph.D. student at Virginia Tech, working with the Institute for Policy and Governance. We are a research institute that's also focused in these spaces of how to increase good governance more broadly and work with nonprofit and, and other spaces. Uh, we have a broad team attached to this. A number of our members are here with me today. I thank them for being here. Uh, we all come from a variety of different backgrounds in practice and in academia. Um, we've also been working hand in hand with Helen and Molly here from the city. Thank you very much to them for their support throughout this. We meet weekly and, and continue to work together throughout this process. So what is Grant Ready Roanoke? Very simply speaking, as Ms. Turner shared, it's a capacity building program. But we want to focus a little bit to share that it's focused in some ways on cross-sector collaboration. As we just heard about the collaboration between TAP and the Sheriff's Office, we know that the problems that face this municipality, the problems that face any municipality cannot be dealt with by any one sector alone. It requires business, nonprofits, government to work together in these spaces. And so this is really a program designed as part of a way to help design, build that capacity for collaboration. Push the wrong button. I'll push this button. So, there's two kind of capacities that we started this program thinking about. We had a number of conversations. For those that either know me, you know, I've been in Roanoke for many years, engaged in some of these similar type conversations. But there are the two kind of capacities that came up in our preliminary conversations where there's a, a desire to collaborate, but a difficulty of understanding how collaboration happens in that nonprofit space. Uh, one of our people that we talked to referred to not Roanoke as the Hunger Games of nonprofits, that there's a lot of competition over very few resources. There's a space where, uh, people don't, uh, really know how they interact with each other in the nonprofit space. People are scared to share ideas, they're worried someone else will take their ideas. You guys have all seen all of these things here. Additionally, we've heard that the city would love to work with some organizations, some non-traditional organizations, but struggles to do so because those organizations don't have reporting capacities, their, their boards aren't able to manage the funds, their financial capacity is not there for these spaces. So this is really designed to help build those spaces. And we could have come in with a, a program and said, here's what we want to teach, and we're going to teach these things. That's not really our approach, though, through IPG. We really believe in this as a co-creative process in which we're going to talk to our constituents and learn what they want. We're going to iterate on this throughout the process. So what we do in the first meeting, what works, we'll continue doing. We're going, but we're going to continue adjusting throughout. But also, we recognize that capacity building has to be relationship-driven. Every nonprofit in the valley has a different struggle, has a different goal. Trailing them all the same things is not going to help them reach where they want to go. Additionally, we recognize that we can't do things for these organizations. They have to have self-directed goals that want to get there. If we do stuff for them, that does not increase their capacity at the end of the day. It just creates reliance on someone else. So we're, this is very much about them creating their own goals, relying on themselves to be there with us, walking beside them, trusting one another to help provide guidance when necessary, but helping them move forward as they wish. So, this whole process started October, November of last year. We started having conversations. These culminated in two listening sessions we conducted, one with area nonprofits and one with area funding agencies to kind of get a comprehensive sense of whether our assumptions about the area were true or not. Uh, in that first listening session, we're aiming at getting what do nonprofits say they want? What are their experiences? On the flip side, we know that what they say they want and what funders experience them having are sometimes two very different things. So we went both sides of that perspective. So we had these two listening sessions along with several other one-on-one conversations to kind of give us a sense. This then led into participant selection for the program. Uh, that was a two-part selection application process. One was a fairly straightforward, three-question application. And that was then paired with the health guide, health checkup for each organization. This was an extensive questionnaire asking about finances, board, mission and vision programming for each of the applicant organizations. It was designed specifically for this program to be a standalone product that any organization could look at as a tool for them to understand where they are better at the end of that process. But it was also part of the application process for this. So it was a, a lengthy thing that people had to go through. Once we got these applications in, we had a steering committee made up of, uh, half-city employees and half, uh, community residents to read these applications, review them. They were then graded on these three criteria you see on the screen, whether they had the desire to increase, whether they have the capacity to increase, and whether that increase in their capacity would lead to a broader impact on the community writ large. Uh, at the end of that, we wind up with these ten organizations that are participating in the program. You heard from the Bus Riders Group, um, BRAG, Bus Riders Advocacy Group earlier today. They're one of our ten organizations. You can see they're wildly diverse here. We have three neighborhood organizations. Three of them do not currently have their five oh one C three. Only two of the organizations have staff at this point. Some of them are nascent, just being formed. Others have been around for twenty-plus years at this point. So there's wide variety of organizations serving a wide variety of needs, from arts to advocacy to, uh, service provision, everything kind of in those spaces. What we've been doing with them since we started in April and May, we start with a one-on-one conversation with every organization to kind of understand where they are, what their priorities are. We've then been moving forward with a three-point check-in with every organization every month. We start every month with a cohort-wide meeting in which we talk about a broad idea, a broad concept, and break, introduce some ideas to them for that month. We then have a one-on-one meeting every month with each organization to talk about what their particular challenges are, what their goals are, how they're interpreting the information they heard at the beginning of the month. And then we come together again at the end of the month to have another cohort meeting in which organizations share their successes. We go back over some of the highlights of what's been going on, but a chance for them to build community with one another by sharing collectively successes and struggles in the space. These are some of the topics we've been going over. We started talking about impact, mission, vision, values, programming, what you're doing to accomplish that, talking about nonprofit basics and documentation, moving this month into board governance. What kind of board do you want to have? How is the board functioning? What do you want them to be doing? Uh, but in each of these spaces, we try not to provide particularly prescriptive advice. We recognize that every organization we have, from our Bus Riders Advocacy Group to Fed Up, are going to have different goals that may require a different board, that may require different policies to be in place. So we try to walk them through a process of asking the right questions and developing those policies or developing those procedures on their own in that space. So just a few examples of some of the successes we're seeing at this point. I mentioned Fed Up. Many of you, I'm sure, will be familiar with them. Joe mentioned the tree planting, which has been, uh, a, a portion of their work in some ways. Uh, they're working at the moment on revising their mission statement and looking at their bylaws and whether they work for their organizations. They want them right now. The Bridge Institute, which is a, uh, conflict resolution group. They've kind of inherited a couple of those, if you're not familiar with them. But they are the, the main conflict resolution organization in town. They're now looking at how they can engage their board in fundraising in a different way to increase sustainability long-term. So we're going to be engaging in some strategic planning with them around that. We also have House of Bread, which works with ex-offenders and other women experiencing trouble to learn soft skills through bread baking. Uh, they're working, one of their founders has now left the organization, moved out of the area, so they're trying to figure out how they build a board to accommodate the fact that their founder is no longer on the board anymore and what that means for them. So these big questions, we also have three organizations at the moment that have five oh one C three applications somewhere in process that would have been very different, I, I think, if they hadn't been participating in the program. So they will all hopefully come into this much healthier as they start that. That's not to say the program hasn't had its challenges. From a participant perspective, we ask about ten hours a month from folks. So you have two and a half hours at a first meeting, an hour and a half at the monthly closing meeting, and one to two hours of one-on-one meetings in that time, and then four to five hours of organizational work on their own to kind of do that. That's a big-time commitment for a board member who might have been experiencing two to three hours of work on that. But we're also cognizant that that's sometimes a commitment that's involved in creating change for an organization or for a community writ large. But we also want to dignify that the time that they're giving is immense, and, uh, it's difficult to give that time, even if you have the best of intentions for it. We've also experienced that it's a little bit difficult when the goal-setting space, that people have a, a broad idea of where they want to go, but the immediate steps to get there have been difficult. And so we've been doing some work on what is goal-setting, how to do that, or the idea of smarty goals, how do you accomplish them? What is a, uh, what are the process to get there? And on our side, you know, it's been a difficulty of, uh, a, a challenge, but also a joy to be able to try and find something that works for all of these organizations with these different levels of development, to work with an organization that doesn't have their five oh one C three versus one that has two staff people and has been around for twenty years, that making a message that works for both of them is not easy. But it's been, um, fun. And then as much as that ten hours a month has been hard for our folks, it's also something we recognize it's really, from our perspective, there's a ton more that we'd love to share with these folks, and there's never enough time. And we're talking about board governance for thirty minutes. We really can't get into the depth that we want to in that space. So it's a, it's a constant push and pull. But we're, we're very excited as we look ahead to October, November, when this program will end. Um, we're hopeful that all ten of these organizations will have increased capacity. They'll all be able to imagine themselves differently. They'll be able to hopefully trust and be more trustworthy partners in relationship to both the city and other partners that they'll be working with. They'll have a different understanding of what resources mean to them, how power manifests in their work, whether it's advocacy work or whether it's in the space. Hopefully, they'll be more resilient, more able to handle change in these spaces as well. So all this leaves us, though, with, this is just ten organizations. This has been a pilot program for this year. Uh, we would love to stay involved moving forward. We know that this work is iterative, and as we said, it's changing all the time. And we'd like the chance to pilot it moving forward. Um, we also know that we're in a place where federal funding and other sources of nonprofit funding are disappearing, and it's more and more important for our local nonprofits to be competitive, to bring what funding there is available into the valley. Um, we also know that ecosystem building takes time and resources and commitment over a period of time. We're hopeful that these ten organizations help contribute to a culture. But that culture, as with any board culture, takes years and years to manifest and build intentionally in those spaces. So that is my time. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to work on this. And thank you, mayors of council, and Ms. Turner, for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. That was a great overview of, uh, really an extraordinary program and much needed. Um, what questions or comments to members of council have? Mr. Volason?
Mr. Stevens, thank you so much for this presentation and this program. Um, as somebody who's been a, a head of a nonprofit here in the city, I get the Hunger, Hunger Games. Uh, that really is the way it is. And this is something that we've needed for quite some time. So I'm really glad to see this program coming, uh, happening, actually happening here in Roanoke. And I was kind of wondering, what are the, like, what will be those things that determine whether y'all do this, uh, in the future? What do we need to do to make sure that this is still around in another year or two?
Um...
Good afternoon.
Cue Ms. Ferguson.
[laughter]
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council. Um, funding will be the determining factor. Um, this is also one of the reasons, before the change in the administration, we saw this as an opportunity for our nonprofits to become stronger, um, so that we weren't also getting some of the requests that we were getting. And so, um, while we had an opportunity to do this, it was also kind of bad timing. Um, but we hope that they will become stronger through this program, and maybe we can find some money to continue this on.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to that, what is the, uh, what's the amount needed to fund this on an annual basis?
That's a good question. So this year, um, we actually started... It's two fifty, I believe. But that includes all of our expenses, like food, supplies, like really all of it through, and that also is going to include some staff training as well.
So you said two hundred fifty thousand? Okay. And was all that part of a grant?
That was all ARPA.
ARPA, okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Good afternoon, Mr. Stevens. I would like to know the groups that, the organizations that come in, um, for this training, what is their biggest misconception about, uh, being part of a nonprofit organization?
Uh, you put me on the spot here. Uh, I, I think I'll, I'll share this from our perspective, which is, we had a conversation after we went through the first month of the program when we realized this is really a behavior change program as much as we can view it and call it whatever we want. If someone wants different outputs from their organization, then they have to change the inputs to their organization, whether that's their mindset or their revenue, the money coming in, whatever it is, that if you want, you keep doing things the same way, that that's a, you're going to wind up with the same results. And so I think a lot of folks struggle with the change that's required to go through the organizational change to get to where they want to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would, yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor, and then I'll finish up, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you, Mr. Stevens. I think this, uh, I'm in touch with a couple of the groups that are a part of this program, and, um, I've heard nothing but really great feedback in, uh, the work that you all are doing together and forcing them to sit down and be thoughtful about a lot of tough questions. It's hard. As a lot of us know, nonprofits are difficult to run. Um, so I really appreciate the partnership and, um, definitely also appreciate Molly and Helen's help. And I wonder for that, uh, that cost question about how do we do this in the future, could there be some way to have sort of like a report card from, like, so we have these ten groups that are going to come out of it. When we're thinking about, you know, maybe there's a match thing, and if it's two hundred and fifty K to do this again next year, if the city can come up with a hundred or a hundred and fifty Ks, we're thinking about it. come up with 100 or 150Ks, we're thinking about it, I think it helps us explain to ourselves and understand where the money's going, and also to other taxpayers, if we can show some of the good work that these organizations are doing, that they would not have maybe otherwise been able to do or as effectively. So just something to think about in terms of how we might be making the case as we're doing year-round budgeting now, and thinking about how, how would we find funds for this in the future, and how would we justify spending them, that money. But I, I think it is definitely money well spent, I'm really grateful for the partnership, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Vice Mayor, and I was just going to add, earlier this year when we had the mayor's business summit, we had a relatively large number of nonprofit representatives there, and it raises the interesting question that if someone is thinking that they have a product that should go in a nonprofit route, it may be more aligned to a business plan, so there's that kind of discernment. But I think too, we also talked about this, this idea, and this gets back to, I think, your comments about organizational behavior and just scope of work. And that is, a lot of times, and I've seen this on a grassroots level in Roanoke, where someone has a really great program, and they think that in order to get funding, that they need to make that program into a nonprofit, which is a much bigger step, and it adds a lot more levels of complexity and capacity, and in the long term can actually have a negative effect on the program. So I appreciate the, the discernment within which you all are working with these groups to help them understand that better, and I think the more we can do that on the front end, and encourage collaboration, because, you know, someone may have a strong program, and they don't need the fiscal overhead, but there may be another, an existing nonprofit in the community that could serve as their fiscal agent and bring that program in under their umbrella, without, without the program losing its identity. So, thank you all. Would you be willing to introduce your team that's here with you?
Absolutely, I will allow them to introduce themselves over here if they will.
If you all could come up so we can see you and hear you, and our vast television audience can see you.
Good afternoon, my name is Max Stevenson, I'm the director of the Virginia Tech Institute for Policy and Governance.
Welcome, thank you.
I'm Marcy Schnitzer, I'm a consultant with Institute for Policy and Governance, and have a lot of experience working with nonprofit organizations.
Thank you.
I'm Andy Morikawa, I'm a senior fellow at the Institute for Policy and Governance, and I'm a retired nonprofit executive.
Fantastic, thank you all so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you all so much.
Ms. Turner, I think we're ready for our second briefing.
Absolutely. Ms. Amir, I would like to introduce Ms. Helen Ferguson, who will provide an update on the organization's opioid abatement program.
Welcome, thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire in his absence, members of city council, and Ms. Turner. Today, I'm going to do my best to give you guys an update on the status of our city's opioid funds and the plans to move forward. So we're going to cover a brief background, review of the steps for the state application process, a review of last year and this year's awards, a five-year budget plan, and the city's new policy and application process, and then next steps. So you guys are maybe familiar with the opioid settlement funds in the OAA already, but just to give a brief background, the settlement funds came from over-prescribing and misuse of opioid funds leading to the opioid epidemic, and the lawsuits that resulted in a settlement. We are fortunate to receive those funds through different pots of funding, which can, I will refer through, refer to throughout this presentation, is either national settlement or state funding. So here is a slide showing most of the national settlement funds. As you can see on this slide, there's several different companies involved in it, and then also you'll see that the timeframe for the payments are either very short, such as four years, or go as long as like 15 years. And this is a little bit of an older slide, so I think some of these settlements, the status of them have been updated. We also have our state fund, funds that come through, and so that's, that pot of money is divided up into basically three chunks. We have the division that's 15% that goes to the Commonwealth, we have the division that goes to the localities, that's about 30%, and then we have 55% that goes to the opioid abatement authority, and that is pretty much the controlling factor for us. So that 55% is broken up into subcategories, 15% of that is pretty much entitlement funds for us, that is entitlement funds for every locality, they are given their own distribution. We have what we call cooperative partnerships, we have access to those funds as long as we partner with another locality. Then 15% goes to state agencies, and 35% is unrestricted funds. I didn't know much about unrestricted funds until we got our most recent award letter, so I will be speaking a little bit more about that here shortly. This next slide is very hard to read, this information is available on the OAA's website, it is a snapshot of the funding that is predicted, or projected that we will receive, all the way down to 2042. One of the reasons why I included this slide is because everybody knows that there's a lot of money involved in this project, but one of the things that I want to point out is that years 2040, 2041, and 2042, the prediction, the prediction is that we will not receive any funding, and so I just wanted to make a note of that. So I want to transition to talking about the state application process. This year, applications were submitted from our area on April 1st, which was the deadline. We were very fortunate in that the state worked with me, I was new to this process, they reviewed our applications, gave some technical assistance, and then our applications were reviewed by the committee and submitted to the board for approval. The board presents and publishes the list of recommendations, and then the ones that they approve publicly on the website, so it is a very transparent process. However, I chose not to notify our local organizations that they were funded until I received our award letters. And I'm kind of glad I did that because there were some contingencies attached to some of the funding. So let's talk about the awards for 2025 and 2026. I know we're going into FY 2026, but I did want to review FY 25, because some of the organizations that are receiving funding are in either what we would call their second or third year of funding. When you apply for these funds, you are awarded funding the first year, and then you have the opportunity to reapply four more times for funding. So in 2025, the city awarded Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, Family Services Roanoke Valley, Roanoke City Fire EMS, and Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition, out of our individual pot of funding, for a total of $281,000. Some of this funding has not been dispersed yet, the city, we were late in getting out our MOUs, but we are working with the organizations to get them their funding. For the cooperative awards in 2025, Restoration Housing received funding, they actually opened up The Grove on Patterson, so their funding went to capital work for that project. And then Roanoke Valley Collective Response, which does a lot of our work and research in our area on opioid addiction, they've received funding as well. Also, I want to point out, because it is a cooperative agreement, we do have matching funds, especially with Restoration Housing from Roanoke County for that project. So I'm going to transition to FY 26. We submitted the applications, as I mentioned before, and we did receive a lot of technical assistance, and I want to thank the state for that. But Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare was funded again, this is year three out of their five of available funding. Family Services of Roanoke Valley, they were also funded. One thing to point out is that Family Services had one project, and they have switched projects, and the state was nice enough to work with us again, so that the project that we are doing in our area works for our area, and we aren't just doing work to be doing it. For our cooperative awards, we have Four Truce Recovery. Four Truce Recovery actually applied last year and did not make it out of our city's process, they were fairly new organization at that time, and they had not opened their first house when we had to submit, and so we applied this year, and so they are receiving a total of $116,200 of matching funds between the city and the county, and then they also receive state funds, and this is their first year of funding, so they will be available for four more years of funding after this. Navigator Care Specialists, this is one that I know that our court system here in the valley is excited about. This one actually made it to the state level last year but was denied, and so this year they did receive funding. So this will provide two staff members that will assist the courts to help families impacted by the opioid addiction, or I'm sorry, the opioid epidemic, and this one actually has funding from all three locales, so it actually has funding from Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and Salem. Roanoke Valley Collective Response has also received funding again this year, and this is year three out of five of their available funding, this is also the first year that they have received matching dollars from Roanoke City and Roanoke County. Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition also received funding under the cooperative agreement this year, and so they have received 49,000 in matching funds from Roanoke City and Roanoke County. This opens them up for four years of additional funding, because this was a new project. And last but not least, The Grove on Patterson, so as I mentioned before, Restoration Housing received funding. This year, the state liked this project in particular, maybe Mr. Spencer can speak a little bit more to that later, but they decided to fund this project out of the restricted funds, and so they received matching funds from Roanoke City, Roanoke County, and then of course, state funds. However, because it is not a new project, this is a second year of funding, so they will be able to apply three more times after this, and then they can apply separately as a brand-new project. So in total, there's $163,100 in matching funds from the city, and a total of about a little over a million dollars from the state, for a total of $1.2 million, not including our carryover funds from where people did not, oh, it's not on it, sorry, where people did not maybe spend all their money. And I wanted to give you those numbers before I start talking about the budget, because that's the next spot. So I wanted to present the five-year budget, so we're going to talk about years FY 26 and FY, uh, through FY 30, and I've broken it up into revenues, expenses, and then we'll see a summary slide so you can see the numbers together. So on the slide, I have the settlement, what I'm calling settlement funds and direct funds, those are the ones that we don't really have to ask for, those just kind of show up to us. And then you'll see the state funds, which are the ones I talked about where we have to send an application to the state to actually receive them, those are more of our entitlement funds. And so these are just anticipated or projected numbers for, as far as the revenue. One thing I did want to point out on this slide is that interest. We can earn interest on our direct dollars when they hit our account, but currently we are not, and so in all the numbers you will see calculated going forward, interest is not there, but I think for longevity of this program, it's important that we move the funds to an interest-bearing account, so that we can actually have this program go a little bit longer. And then here for our expenses, there are a couple of things I want to point out. So historically, for expenses into this particular program, we have only done matching funds out of our direct dollars, and then of course, we've only applied for money through the state. This budget is recommending that we have a staff position, there's a lot of work that goes into this project, a lot of reviewing applications, a lot of reporting to the state. Adding a line for an additional place for individuals to apply for funding through our area to help spend some of this money, so people have more access to it. Allowing for more matching funds for the individual application to the state and for the cooperative application to the state, and then allowing for a contingency fund. We've talked about earlier, actually Brad kind of segued into it, and I think Councilman Volleson, you alluded to the disappearing of funding. I also think that as funding starts showing back up, they're going to start requiring more matches from your locality, and I think that it would be helpful if we build that in, so like if SAMSA has a grant, but they say you have to have some participating dollars from your locality, we have some available there. And so for more of middle-of-the-year type requests, we actually have a small pot for unexpected expenses, or such opportunities as that, to do some matching dollars for organizations. And then of course, the state expenses are regular applications that come in. So what it looks like for our summary is you have our estimated total revenue at a little over $2 million, and for FY 26, our total expenses at about 600, which gives us a net of 1.4. And somebody may ask, well, why aren't you spending it all every year? Well, as you, as I alluded to before, in the last few years, money doesn't come in, so we want to make sure we're not spending it every year. So moving forward, right, so we have a budget, we know who we funded last year and who we're funding this year, so let's, oh, sorry. Contingency funds. So I've already mentioned what they are going to be used for, but I just want to make sure that we understand, the contingency funds are there for unexpected costs, one-time funding opportunities, but we really want to make sure that we don't have an organization in our community that has an opportunity, and we don't have a built-in way to help We do have a city policy now, it should be available on the city's website, along with a webpage devoted to opioid abatement funds by August 15th. There will be three application processes listed on the website, and it will give instructions for people on how to do it, and it'll have like question-and-answer sections to go along with that as well. So organizations must meet the organizational and programmatic requirements, this will all be found on the website, these are just a few bullet points that I want to give out as examples. So organizations must be in compliance with all grant funding offered throughout the city. There are other opportunities throughout the city to get grant funding, so like we're still wrapping up ARPA, we have our HUD dollars, and we want to make sure that if an organization applies for this funding, that they're meeting their criteria in the other areas as well. We want to make sure that they are meeting the nine core abatement strategies, and that they're also working with Roanoke Valley Collective Response on the blueprint for action, because that is the assessment that's been made in our area, and so we want to make sure we're focused on that. The application process, right now I'm trying to make it as simple as possible, so they'll submit the application via email. Applications will be scored zero to 100, applications that score less than 70 will not get funding, and so I'm making that very clear upfront, so, and the score sheet will be shared as well, so they know kind of what sections weigh different things. And then next steps. Additional staff support, I've talked about that already, I learned by putting all this in the system, not sure how Wayne got done, what parts he got done, but this is a really intensive process, it's a great opportunity for our city, but if we want to do what's best for our city, we, we really do need a staff member dedicated to work on this process. Having a website where people can go and look and see what we're doing, what projects we're funding, how those projects are doing, will be really important as well. And then having a review committee internally to look at the projects and their progress, and so the review committee would consist of community members, subject matter expert, and a staff member not associated with the funds. And then making sure we have a place for feedback, so one of the things that I noticed when people first heard that I was going to be working with these funds, I got a lot of phone calls, and I'd much rather have that feedback going into one place, whether it's positive or negative, so that we can actually collect it and make sure that we're recording it and doing something about it. Okay, that's all of it, I wasn't sure I was going to make it through my set time. Are there any questions?
Ms. Powers.
I have a question. Can you tell me what is the gold standard in the expenditure of all the settlement funds? What, what does that mean? I know it said you had to select that you would do that, and that there was 30, was it 35%?
Yeah, so, 35, 25.
25, okay.
So the gold standard, we actually signed, our council signed paperwork that we would agree to that, I believe, back in 2023, and so the gold standard is an extra lift that your projects can get, and extra funding that can be tacked on. And so when you fill out the application, you're agreeing that you're only going to use those funds for abatement measures, and the city has agreed that all of our projects would qualify for abatement measures, and so we have access to that additional funding.
Okay, I have another question. And I also read somewhere in here that, so will this be audited by the state APA office, or will our own internal auditors be looking at any of this?
My thought on that, and I want to be 100% sure, so if I get it wrong, I'm going to ask Mr. Spencer to correct me, and if I, he doesn't know, we will get back to you, but it should be audited by both.
Okay.
The city will provide reporting back to demonstrate that it complied with the gold standards. The gold standards, in essence, ensure compliance with settlement terms of the settlement with all the proceeds, it's kind of a heightened, ensuring that funds are put into abatement, they're not just cities paying themselves back for past, and this is for all the funds, because we get, basically get the funds in three buckets. One comes direct without strings, except for the terms of settlement, the other one goes to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, which you're hearing called the state, so to speak, just for simplicity purposes, and that comes in, that's where the gold standard applies, and we've agreed to apply the gold standard. And then the third bucket is, as you've heard, we were very successful in the grants, think of it as a grant, you apply, and you want to have, work with other localities, and contribute a bit to make your grant application more competitive, and that's a way to enhance. If you looked at the bottom-line number, when it goes down to 42, we're almost going to receive about $5 million in opioid abatement authority money, but the way to enhance that, maybe even double it, is through the competitive grants process. And again, this year, we were very successful. Now, I'm very fortunate to sit on the opioid abatement authority, as well as the grants committee. Now, I have to accuse myself when it involves the city of Roanoke, but that also helps. And then the final thing I want to make a note of is how many compliments I've gotten from the people at the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority about Helen Ferguson, and since she's taken over this, she's doing a fantastic job. Now, she'll probably blush that I've said these things, and go, "Mr. Spencer, why are you doing this?", but it's true, I heard from numerous sources what a pleasure she's, is to work with, and how on top of things she's been.
Say thank you, I want to say thank you, because I do know that grants and all this stuff is a lot of hard work, and this is a lot to keep up with, and so we need to make sure that we do it right. So I'm, I'm guessing too, that, say you do really well with expenses, and there's money left at the end, is that a carryover into the next year, so it's not something that we have to give any money back to anybody?
No, and that's another point, I'm glad you asked that question. So let's say we give an organization, like we applied for it, like you mentioned, through the grant process, if it's part of the money that's been allocated to our city and they don't use it all, it goes back into our pot for us to use the next year.
And I was happy to see that you're going to look at the interest part, because I think you have a great opportunity there to increase those funds, so thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, Mr. Volleson.
Ms. Ferguson, thank you so much for your presentation. I just wanted to ask, the Roanoke Valley Collective Response, could you give just like a 500-foot, what do they do? Because they are, I know we're working with our partners in them, and we get more specific stuff from you about, you know, different, what we're doing as a city, but what are we also doing with the collective response?
So I want to make sure they're not, okay, I want to make sure, give them an opportunity to talk about what they do. They are actually really good at bringing everybody together, they are a resource bank, a resource hub, so they are pretty much our subject matter expert. So they are pretty much our subject matter experts in our community. So they do the research, they're actually working with IPG as well, to do the research in our community, find out what our needs are, what our gaps are, to figure out what's working well when these different organizations are doing their projects and what's not working. But they are who you can call if, say, you want to start a new program and you're not sure if you've got the right research behind it, or maybe you need a model and you're not sure where to go for a model. That is the group to call. They're also a great resource for our certified peer recovery specialist. And so they do a mentoring group with them, and then they also have the group that actually gets them together where they actually have their own resource hubs. So they really are pulling all of our agencies together, and they're also providing technical assistance to our organizations as they're applying for not only opioid abatement funds, but also other grant opportunities.
Excellent, thank you. And the other thing that I kind of saw here is that they're in year three of five. Does that mean that after five, that the collective response goes away, or that just our funding, they have to go for another grant, or how does that work?
So after year five, they will have to fill out a brand-new application. So right now, what they do is they renew their application. After year five, they can fill out a brand-new application, and it's up to the state to decide to fund them, or we can fund them separately in that new pot that I'm talking about. But they don't just go away because they're still their own organization. It just means that they have to start a brand-new application.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ferguson. I thought that was extremely helpful, and I also want to say thank you because I think it's so important that, you know, we're doing this work and that we get it right because it's so many other issues that we care about beyond the immediate, like health and safety of the people dealing with opioid addiction, but we hear from a lot of constituents about issues around crime and homelessness, and we know that these things are, can be interconnected. My question was, and maybe, yeah, tell me if this is a naive question, but some of the awards where we're able to partner and get matching funds from Roanoke County and one with Salem, is there an opportunity, or how does that work? Would we be able to get matching funds from other localities in Roanoke Valley? Because it's my sense, and I don't know, you probably have better data on it, that a lot of folks come to Roanoke looking to get better, or they're sent here in some way by family or whatever, like, hey, there are resources available for you in Roanoke. And so it's great to see some of our neighboring localities, you know, how could we work more with Franklin County, with Salem and Roanoke County to partner on the, I think those are grants, correct? In the future beyond 2026, because, you know, that's my sense is that a lot of people come here if you're dealing with addiction because not only are there resources available, but it's easier to get around in a city if you're trying to, you know, navigate life than it is maybe out in rural Craig County or something. So, yeah, what do you think about that, or is that possible, or is that something we're thinking about?
I think it's possible. I think there are two ways that we can really begin getting the ball rolling for that. So one of those is still working through the collective response. Some of the feedback that we've received from the state is that we need to get more locales involved. And so one way we do that is work with the collective response, work with organizations as they're getting funding, and we notice that they're servicing individuals who may be started in Franklin County or Bodatack County, having them reach out to those localities first and start the conversation there. Because a lot of times, by the time the application's already come to us, they have an idea of what locality they want to work with. And so having them start the conversation first and then inviting us to the conversation at that point, because most of the localities want us to be the fiscal agent. That's the other piece of this. Nobody really wants to be the fiscal agent. But I think it's doable and it's possible. I think it's just about having the right conversations.
Thank you, and thank you for your work.
Others?
Ms. Ferguson, thank you. This is great work and a great report. This is very intersectional because while we're seeing a reduction in overdose deaths and numbers of overdoses, that's all encouraging. It's a long game here. It's going to take time, but we also know that there are contributing factors in related opioids, other substance use disorder diagnoses, and how that's connected often with violence or with homelessness. So one of the things I'm curious about is, and I know the collective response does this work to their blueprint, but as a city, how do we go about prioritizing how we expend these funds? So I'm thinking about this through the lens of this intersectional work. How do we take into consideration how this, these programs that we fund not only help with physical wellness of a person, but also ensuring housing stability and maybe creating more housing opportunities? I know that several of the programs here have recovery housing as part of their effort. And that may not be fully developed at this point, but I'm just curious if that, how we go about prioritizing that in terms of the funding process.
So the opioid abatement authority has their priorities, and then they pretty much stick with the nine core that are listed out of Johns Hopkins. However, I think that's one of the flexible points that we have with our local funding because we can kind of set our own priorities as long as they still hit those nine core. And prevention is part of that. And so as long as we link the prevention piece to that, I think it gives us the flexibility to set our own priorities for our local funding, to be able to address some of the other pieces that, where the intersectionality happens.
Okay, thank you. And the only other question I have is about the application process. When, is that open for a particular amount of time, or is it revolving?
So the original plan, and they changed their dates for when the state's application will be due, so I'm still working on pushing the dates back to something I think I can manage. But the original plan was to have it open up on September 1st. And so I'm working on fixing those dates. It will probably still be around that September timeframe. That will be for the local funds, and then the state funds will open up in October because they do give us access to the application that early on, so we can begin working through some of the parts of the application. And so that's where I'm looking at right now, and that's why I hope to get everything up by August 15th, so everybody can see the dates that are available and they can work within those timelines. And hopefully, we don't wait till the last minute to submit things.
And how long will that application process be open?
Oh, so the state application process closes in February this year, so it's a really long window. And the plan is to close our local process in November so that their year can run January 1 to December. So our year will run a little bit different than the state's year, but...
So essentially, it'll be a two-month open application process. Great. And then the last question on that is, how are we going to go about communicating that to the public?
So like I said, launch is going to be August 15th, and I'm going to try to work with our communications team to get it out and launch on our Facebook page as well. And then we have a list of individuals who have already applied for funding before, reaching out to them to let them know about the opportunity.
And I would presume that with, through the monthly Roanoke Valley Collective Response meetings, that's another...
Another resource.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our briefings today, and we will move on now to our items recommended for action. First up is the approval of the five-year plan for opioid settlement funds budget. And there is one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Ms. Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the five-year budget for opioid settlement funds under the terms of the agreement between the Commonwealth of Virginia and the City of Roanoke, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute on behalf of the city any necessary settlement documents and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, the next three items directly relate to the presentation that Ms. Ferguson just did.
Thank you. All right, any discussion by council? All right, then we are ready to vote. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item B is the acceptance and appropriation of 2026 opioid settlement funds. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to accept and appropriate 2026 opioid settlement funds received by the City of Roanoke from nationwide settlements in the amount of $215,411.36 to support community-based opioid abuse prevention, treatment, and recovery efforts. Appropriating 2026 opioid settlement funds detailed more fully infra as well as authorizing the execution and filing of appropriate documents to obtain and utilize such funds and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything to add? Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item C is the acceptance and appropriation of fiscal year 26 Virginia opioid abatement authority funds. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nash and Ms. Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to accept and appropriate Virginia opioid abatement authority funds for FY '26 in the amount of $1,242,311, with a match from the city in the amount of $163,100 and a match from other local, other localities in the amount of $167,100 for the total funding of the amount of $1,572,511. Appropriating 2026 opioid settlement funds detailed more fully infra and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary, any documents necessary to accept such funds and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item D is the appropriation of the Department of Justice Federal Asset Sharing Program Funds. There is one measure, which is a budget ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Ms. Sanchez Jones. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Department of Justice Federal Asset Sharing Program and the Department of Treasury Federal Asset Sharing Program for enhancing law enforcement operations, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2025-2026 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do you have anything to add to this?
Just a couple, and we do have our police business manager, Kevin Snoll, here with us tonight, today as well. So this appropriation is to ask for the funds and interests accrued that have been deposited from our participation in the federal task force groups to be officially made available to us as revenue for the police department. There are very strict guidelines on how the funds and what the funds can be used for.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the budget ordinance is adopted. Item E is the appropriation of state asset sharing program funds. There's one measure, a budget ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nash and Mr. Volleson. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the State Asset Sharing Program for enhancing law enforcement operations, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2025-2026 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything to add to this?
Yes, similarly to the last item, this item is for the state funds as opposed to federal.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the budget ordinance is adopted. Item F is the acceptance and appropriation of the fiscal year 2026 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
I'll move the ordinance. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Powers and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the FY '26 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant made to the Police Department for the City of Roanoke by the Department of Criminal Justice Services of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Appropriating 2025-2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such grant, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Yes, the funds for this grant will be used to purchase a mobile camera trailer used to assist in addressing violent crimes in various locations around the city. The camera trailer will be self-sufficient and powered by solar panels with generator backup. This will enhance the police department's capabilities associated with the Roanoke Operations and Crime Control Center.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Is this separate from or alongside the real-time crime center efforts?
Maybe we'll work together with that. It's just another tool that we'll have to put out in an area where we don't have officers to help us in the crime center as well.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is out. And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item G is the acceptance and appropriation for 2026 Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance. Well, second.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson and Mr. Hagan. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the FY '26 Virginia Sexual and Domestic Violence Victim Fund Grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Appropriating 2025-2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such grant, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, anything to add?
I do, yes. This grant provides a grant-supported position in the police department, and this position is, or this person rather, reaches out to the victims of sexual and domestic violence to offer support, follow-up, and services. This person also acts as an advocate for the victim throughout the investigation and prosecution process.
And my understanding, this is an ongoing staff position.
Yes.
It is.
Correct, yeah, thank you. All right, any discussion by council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Item H is the acceptance and appropriation of the fiscal year 26 School Security Officer Continuation Grant. There's one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volison and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance accepting and appropriating the School Security Officer Continuation Grant made to the Roanoke City Public Schools by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Appropriating 2025-2026 grant funds detailed more fully infra, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary, any documents necessary to accept such grant, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Turner?
Yes, this grant provides security officers in our elementary schools. This is a continuation grant, and Roanoke City Public Schools are providing the matching funds needed. The City of Roanoke is the fiscal agent.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? We could. Oh. We do have a statement to be read by Ms. Sanchez Jones. Oh, my apologies. Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Okay, I have a statement of conflict of interest. I, Vivian Sanchez Jones, state that I have a personal interest in the item number seven, one H, on the July 21st, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. agenda regarding a grant and appropriation for school security officers because I am an employee of the City of Roanoke Public School Division, and as such, I have a personal interest in this matter. Therefore, in accordance with Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, I will refrain from participation in this matter. I ask the city clerk to accept this statement and ask that it may be part of the business, the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Thank you.
And now, I'll ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. This time, I'll call on Ms. Turner, our city manager, for additional comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor McGuire and city council members. I have two comments today. Our emergency management team recently took part in a regional training exercise organized by the Virginia Department of Health. The goal was to practice how we'd respond to a potential measles outbreak and to strengthen coordination between local agencies. These kind of exercises are essential, as they help us find and fix gaps in our plans, improve communications across teams, and make sure that we're ready to act quickly to protect public health in an actual emergency, if an actual emergency occurs. Number two, last week, our building safety personnel participated in a specialized training session focused on fire alarm systems and the growing risks associated with lithium batteries. Led by nationally recognized safety instructors, the session emphasized the importance of staying ahead of emerging hazards, especially as energy storage technologies like lithium batteries become more common in homes and businesses. Trainings like these are key to ensuring our team remains prepared to identify risks, respond quickly, and help keep our communities safe. And those complete my comments for today.
Thank you, and I wanted to thank you for alerting us over the weekend about the Swift Water Rescue Team that went out. I know there were some extremely high flooding incidents in surrounding counties, and we're grateful to the team that they were able to...
Yeah, they went there and came back safely, but they were, they did have to stay an additional day, so...
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anything related to our public matters follow-up today?
Not today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe we have anything today on the agenda from our city attorney or our director of real estate valuation, so we'll go on to reports of committees, and we have a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that city council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell is the director of accounting and is the spokesperson. There's one measure, a budget ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan and Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth Federal and Private Grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024-2025 school grant fund appropriations for fiscal year 2025, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you, and I believe Ms. Sanchez Jones has a statement to read.
Statement of conflict of interest. I, Vivian Sanchez Jones, state that I have a personal interest in the item number eight and one, appoint on the July 21st, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. agenda regarding a general appropriation of funds because I am an employee of the City of Roanoke Public Schools Division, and as such, I have a personal interest in this matter. Therefore, in accordance to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, I will refrain from participation in this matter. I ask that the city clerk accept this statement and ask that it may, it may be made a part of the, part of the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez Jones. And with that noted, I will ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the budget ordinance is adopted. Item two under Reports of Committees are comments on certain authorities, boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaisons or appointees. Do we have any liaison reports today? I have one. Ms. Sanchez Jones and I serve as officers for the Greater Roanoke Transit Company Board. You heard a little preview earlier today about some of the things we discussed. We are excited that there is potential resolution to a shelter at Walmart at Valley View, so stay tuned for that. Looking ahead, in the coming years, we'll be looking at fare box replacement as we move toward mobile ticketing, so that's a very exciting thing. And then, all of the bus signs that are throughout the city are in the process of being replaced, and adding information about the VMGO app, so that people at the different bus stops will be able to access the app there at the location. In addition to those things, we are continuing to see an increase in ridership year over year. This year, 3% increase as compared to last year. And this fall, through a series of events that you'll be learning more about in the next month or two, we'll be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Valley Metro and public transit in our area, so stay tuned to that. All right, we have no unfinished business. Under item 10, we do have an amendment to Resolution Number 43119-010725, which established a meeting schedule for city council commencing January 1st, 2025, and terminating December 31st, 2025, to reflect a meeting date change. There is one measure, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Volison and Ms. Powers. And Madam Clerk, if you'll read the title paragraph and any other information in the resolution that indicates why we're making the revision.
Yes, I will. A resolution amending the meeting schedule for city council for the 2025 calendar year, whereas by Resolution Number 43119-010725, adopted by city council on January 7th, 2025, city council set the meeting schedule for the 2025 calendar year. And whereas, the joint meeting with the school board has been moved from Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, to Monday, October 6, 2025, with the location determined, and such change needs to be approved by council.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. Item 11, motions in miscellaneous business. Any inquiries or comments by members of council? Ms. Powers?
Yes, I just want to thank our city attorney for getting back to me today so quickly. We've, I've received several emails situations about some hybrid wolf dogs in the direly Mudlick area, and so, we've asked our city attorney to look into what the city can do about that. So, is that something, that we can possibly get something back to us in August?
I'm going to, we've got, we're on top of it. Something we're going to work with our intern on, so she'll be working with us to help us craft an ordinance, and then we'll work through the city manager's office to get that onto the council agenda as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. I just want to take a proactive approach to this and not see us at a position to where, you know, any of these dogs could get out and, you know, hurt one of our children or one of our citizens or whatever, but thank you very much for getting on this very quickly. I appreciate that.
Ms. Cardwell's on top of it.
Thank you, Ms. Powers, Ms. Cardwell, and I want to thank citizens that alerted us to this very quickly, and the actions of the animal warden and police to do what they were able to do, but we clearly need to give this further consideration on how we can act, so, thank you. Anything else from other council members? All right, we don't have any vacancies to consider today. We'll do that at our August 4th meeting. So, all that being said, we will stand in recess for a closed meeting and reconvene tonight at 7 o'clock here in council chambers.